Back to order and we will continue with a discussion and action on a settlement of two litigation matters. First of all, there is a Brian. Cesarian.
Terzian.
Brian S versus Planning and Zoning Commission of the City of Norwalk HHD-CV24-6182560-X. Do I do you have a do I hear a motion?
Galen, I'd like to make a motion to approve the settlement. Based on the fact that the stipulation is mutually beneficial in that despite the long history and varied uses of the subject premises. Excuse me, it provides both the commission and Mr. Terzian. More certainty in their expectations for the subject property near term and long-term development. I think secondly, the risk of an adverse decision at trial warrants consideration of this settlement. And I think finally, the resolution of the appeal pursuant to the terms of the stipulation protects the commission's regulations that we passed in the last two years.
Wonderful, thank you. Is there a second to the motion?
Yeah, then I'll second that motion.
Okay, Chapin seconds. Brian, can we do a roll call?
Sure, I can do that.
Galen, can I vote?
Oh, yes. Okay, yes.
Yeah, so everybody I believe is seated that's here.
Yes, everybody who's here is seated. I'm sorry, Diana, I should have.
Okay, thank you.
Start with Mr. Bryce.
Yes.
Ms. Lankowski?
Yes.
Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
Ms. Langgallis?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan Byron? That is yes.
Yes.
Thank you. And Ms. Wells?
Yes. Okay, we'll move on to the second matter. That is Brian Cesarian.
Terzian.
Terzian. The poor man. He I really apologize. I don't know why I have difficulty with his name. Brian S versus Planning and Zoning Commission of the City of Norwalk. Do I hear a motion?
Again, I'd move approval based on the same reasons that I gave for the previous motion. I don't know if you wish me to state them again, but I'd be happy to if our lawyer thinks that that's desirable.
Well, why not?
Okay, the stipulation again is mutually beneficial in that despite the long history and varied uses of the subject premises, it provides both the commission and Mr. Terzian more certainty in their expectations for the subject property near term and long-term development. Secondly, the risk of an adverse decision at trial warrants consideration of the settlement. And finally, the resolution of the appeal pursuant to the terms of the stipulation protects the commission's regulations that we've passed over the last several years.
Wonderful, thank you. Is there a second to this motion?
I'll second him.
Okay, Chapin, second.
Dan moves too quickly for me. You got it.
And Diana, you are seated again, obviously, and we'll do another roll call.
Certainly, I'll just go same order. Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
Ms. Lankowski?
Yes.
Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
Ms. Langgallis?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan Byron?
Yes.
And Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Also unanimous.
Wonderful.
You know, if I if I may, just a final comment. I'm I'm really very pleased that we have this behind us. But I think it's also a testament to the work that our staff has done. That this is really the only challenge we've had to new regulations despite their complexity and the amount of time that's been put in to put them in place. So, thank you, Steve and the rest of the staff.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Absolutely. A big undertaking and it's done very successfully.
Never doing it again.
Okay, well, we'll move on then to review and action on applications. And in this next section, I'd like to take A, B, and C together. They are numbered 2026-198-24 referral, City of Norwalk. Referral of a proposed easement in the vicinity of William Street for purposes of access and maintenance. Important recommendation of action. We will then do 2025-20B-24 referral, City of Norwalk. Referral of proposed easement in the vicinity of Calf Pasture Beach Road for purposes of access and maintenance. Again, a report and referral of action. Number three, 2025-218-24 referral, City of Norwalk. Referral of the of the proposed easement in the vicinity of Marvin Street for the purposes of access and maintenance. Again, we will report and recommend action. Those three are taken together. They're all ever-source easements and are to be treated largely in the same way. I think Ralph Kolov is representing the city in this matter.
Darren and we have I believe I'm Ryan from EverSource.
Okay, we'll proceed, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. My name is Wilbur Jerron. I'm the permit engineer for DPW. Joined here with Ryan Buckland from EverSource Gas and Darren Callahan with Corporation Counsel has assisted us in the review of the agreement for these easements. So I'll go as quickly as I can through all three of them. If I can, I'll share my screen. I think I'll pull up Google Images. I think it'll help illustrate where these easements would be located. Okay. Should be able to see my screen.
Yep.
Excellent. So this here is the first one, item A. It's this is an area of Nathan Hill Middle School. There is currently a regulator station in the front of Nathan Hill Middle School. Due to updated regulations for EverSource Gas, they need to upgrade this system in order to be in compliance with the latest regulations for a regulator station. To do that, EverSource would have to expand the footprint of this regulator station. So after several meetings with the city and EverSource, we determined that a better location for this would be behind Nathan Hill over on William Street. Just bring that up here. So this is where EverSource is requesting a new easement be provided to them from the city in order for them to install their regulator station. If I could just pull up, let's see. Oh, no, that's it. So I'm happy to take any questions if there are any. One thing I want to mention that we did meet with TMP and Parks and Rec to discuss what the city would need in order to accept this easement. And EverSource has agreed to provide tree plantings and a canopy to sort of hide the structures from visibility and make it a little more pleasant to look at. Happy to answer any questions for this one. If none, then I will move on to the next location.
Go ahead, Timmy.
We have a question. Timmy has a question.
Muted, Timmy.
Yeah, sorry. Don't usually make that faux pas. I'm sorry, do these boxes, they're just static sitting there? They don't emit anything? You know, what if a car bashes into them, that kind of thing? I don't know that much about them.
Yeah, I think Ryan Buckland may be able to answer some of the technical questions, but as far as I understand, it doesn't emit anything. It just regulates the gas main and infrastructure underneath the ground.
Okay, so the main is over here off of William Street as well as being over on Strawberry Hill?
Well, as part of this endeavor, EverSource would extend their gas main to bring it to this location in order to make it work. But yes, ultimately, at the end of the project, there will be a gas main underneath the road.
Okay, and so then if the the properties along William Street wanted to hook up it to bring natural gas heat into their house, they could do that?
I believe so. There would be opportunity for them to to connect to the new gas main.
Okay, thank you.
As a another question, is the city being compensated for this easement?
That's a good question. I'm not sure if there is any compensation as part of that agreement. Darren, do you?
The issue of compensation has not been addressed yet.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we'd like to mention that we're still working towards the agreement. So after Corporation Counsel reviews and approves of that agreement, then we would go into executing the signatures needed to officially provide this easement to EverSource. Still subject to review by Corporation Counsel. If there are no further questions for this location, I will move on to item B on Calf Pasture Beach Road. This one is located in front of Marvin School. The gas company is looking to install a pressure monitoring system for the existing gas main. And this one would be situated right behind this retaining wall here in the grass area. I believe this location right around here. Is there any questions regarding this station? This this one would be a much smaller footprint. I believe it's it's just a 10 by 10 area.
Hopefully, they wouldn't have to cut down any of those trees to do the installation?
Correct. There would not be the need to cut down any more trees, which is why they selected this location right here that I'm hovering over because it has the most space in between the trees in order to preserve those trees.
Thank you.
And it's small, so there's no need for screening?
Correct. I don't believe there's any screening proposed.
If there are no further questions, maybe we can move on to the third one.
Happy to. So the last one is actually down the street from Calf Pasture. It is on Marvin Street in front of Low Park. So EverSource is looking to receive an easement right behind this guard rail for a regulator station. The difference being this one would be a temporary location. EverSource has a project to upgrade their infrastructure, their gas main in the Gregory Boulevard neighborhood. But in order to meet the new regulations and compliances, they need to install a regulator station on a temporary basis until that infrastructure under the ground is up updated. Once it's updated, then this regulator station would be removed. And they are anticipating to to have it for approximately two years until the project is complete.
And then will they need to dig up the street and or the sidewalk at that time?
To remove it, I don't believe they need to dig into it. They would need to dig into it to install it, which then they would be responsible for restoration as part of the encroachment permit process with DPW.
Of course, that road was just recently repaved. But anyway, that's life.
Yeah. I'm sorry, through the encroachment permit process, there are fees associated with how good of a road condition there is whenever there is excavation. So there is a mark of for restoration whenever it's 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 a road that's in good condition.
Well, I hope the city holds them to that.
Agreed. You had mentioned that this site would would no longer be required in a few years. Is that something that would be taken into account as a part of the easement, the the temporary nature of it and be reverted back to the city after some duration?
Yeah, part of that agreement, it'll it'll only be a temporary temporary rights to that section of land. Then ever once EverSource removes their infrastructure, the property will will belong back to the city.
Thank you.
No problem.
Okay, good. Steve and Brian, should we do one motion or three for this?
I think you should vote separately.
Okay, do I hear a motion for the first matter? The one on William Street?
I'll make the motion, Galen.
Okay, good. Thank you, Timmy. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Chapin seconds it. And Diana, you are seated again.
Thank you.
Let's do a roll call for this. Steve O'Brien.
Do you want to do it, Brian?
Sure, I'll go ahead. Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan Byron?
Yes.
Ms. Langgallis?
Yes.
Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
Ms. Lankowski?
Yes.
Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
And Ms. Wells?
Yes. So we'll move on to the second matter. One on Calf Patch, Calf Pasture Beach Road. Do I hear a motion? Okay, Timmy moves and Chapin again. And Diana, you were again seated. Can we do another roll call vote?
Sure. We'll mix it up. Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
Ms. Lankowski?
Yes.
Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
Ms. Langgallis?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan Byron?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
And Ms. Wells?
Yes.
That is approved.
And now on to the third, the easement on Marvin Street. Do I hear a motion?
I'll move.
Arius moves. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I think Diana beat you to it.
I think so, well, Diana, this one, sorry.
We'll do another roll call vote.
For Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan Byron?
Yes.
Ms. Langgallis?
Yes.
Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
Ms. Lankowski?
Yes.
Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
And Ms. Wells?
Yes.
All right, those are all set.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you very much.
We'll move on now to a another matter. It's 2025-22 8-24 referral, City of Norwalk. Referral to acquisition of 493 Connecticut Avenue. Report and recommended action. Who is here representing the city on this matter?
Is Ralph Cold on the call?
Yeah, Ralph's here.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. Ralph Cold, I'm representing the Norwalk Water Pollution Control Authority. And we're working in conjunction with the city's Corporation Counsel, Darren Callahan, and the rest of the team.
Okay, please proceed.
Ralph, can you give them a slight background on the needs for the acquisition where Keeler Brook is currently located? And why it would be very beneficial for the city to relocate to a different property?
Yep, I'm going to share my screen.
Details?
Sounds good. I'm going to share my screen so that way everybody can see. All right, did you guys see? I think my computer locked up. Oh, there it goes. All right. Excellent. So currently, so on Connecticut Avenue, 467, just put reference, that's Chick-fil-A. And Keeler Brook is the blue line right that my cursor is on. The Keeler Brook Pump Station is located right here, which is on an ever-source parcel. And during August of 24, the heavy floods, rain events that we had flooded the station and we had total catastrophe of the station. We lost it completely. So the station had to be rebuilt or has to be rebuilt. Unfortunately, where it's located is in the FEMA floodway. So rebuilding in the same location is not an option. In addition, it's underneath the ever-source towers that I'm circling with my cursor right now. And EverSource and OSHA have a lot of requirements as far as what can and can't be built in and around the towers and high-tension power lines. So we've been working with EverSource prior to the flood for multiple years. And we were looking at trying to relocate the station to where my cursor is now on the same parcel. However, post-flood FEMA came in with open dialogue and inspection of the site. And they notified us that where we're proposing the station, besides, you know, all the ever-source issues, the FEMA concern or issue is we're still in the 100-year floodplain. And the city or WPCA to to put any to to have a chance to have any kind of funds of reimbursement from building, rebuilding the station. We went, we we need to get out of the 100-year flood elevation. So looking at this site, ever-source site, there is no property in order to do that. The adjacent property, which is highlighted in blue, 493, at the same time, they had opened up a dialogue with us. And their parcel is out of the 100-year flood zone, which would give us the potential to receive funds from FEMA. And by moving over to this property also gets us away from ever-source and all their requirements. And the construction challenges that the city would have to rebuild the station.
Great, thanks, Ralph. Just to add a few comments. This has been an ongoing dialogue with ever-source since I started with the City of Norwalk in 2018. So it's been a very long dialogue as far as trying to negotiate the land rights and design a project that was constructible with all the limitations that ever-source felt need to be imposed for for safety issues and to protect the infrastructure. When the land adjacent to that property became available, I think everyone immediately realized that this is an opportunity that we really need to seize upon because it's simply not in the long term a feasible solution to maintain a pump station in an easement area under high voltage transmission distribution line. So there there's a unique opportunity. We're hoping to acquire this through a voluntary acquisition. The council has approved an acquisition by eminent demand if that's not possible. And we are on ongoing dialogue with the owner regarding an acquisition price. At this point, we have a request out for some additional appraisal work. They are getting their own appraisal work. And we expect to be in a position to advance that dialogue within the next 30 days. The council has already voted to approve the acquisition. It took it straight. The council did not originate committee. So so that is the reason why we're coming back to the Planning Commission for a 824 approval because it didn't follow the normal public approval process, which would be a committee vote first. If anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Diana, you want to go first? You have your hand up.
I think Timmy's hand would first.
Well, someone, please.
Oh, my question's quick. Isn't there a building on the section that we would be acquiring? Yes.
There is. There is a building. That building would be raised, leveled, and you know, at the exact location of of where it's it's a it's a it is a possibility that the either the building or portion of the building could be used for some city purpose. But in all likelihood, the the expectation is that at least a portion would be would be leveled in order to fit the the new pump station. There's still design work necessary determining exactly the optimal place to locate it. And there's several options there.
So who owns 473? EverSource or? Sorry for jumping you, Timmy.
That's okay.
EverSource owns 473 and 493 is the target property.
Yeah, yes, obviously. All right.
Oh, Timmy and then Chapin.
Thank you. So the owner of the whole entire structure at 493 is willing to sell this to the city?
Well, they're looking to sell it. It's a question of price.
Okay, and then I I believe right now part of that building is occupied by the taqueria and then the other portion of the building is not utilized. I might be wrong about that, but I drive by and it never seems like there's much going on there.
Yeah, the chat.
And then so ever-source owns all of that lower parking lot there, but all of that is in the flood zone and they can't utilize any of that property for this?
That is correct.
Yeah, because it does graphically descend.
Well, I yes, I know. I'm familiar with the parking lot because I go to Rincon.
Buy it every day now.
And why isn't ever-source purchasing this property then instead of the city?
Well, it's our it's our infrastructure. So it would be for the city to to acquire.
Well, could we build up the property that ever-source owns rather than taking a business away from Connecticut Avenue?
It's it's just gotten to the point where its constructibility has become either it completely is feasible or along the lines of infeasible. I mean, we're we're at a point where we're talking about potentially having contractors out with, you know, shovels to excavate because we can't it would be difficult to adhere to the the height limitations with excavators. So it's it's become almost an unconstructable project. It may be actually unconstructable. It certainly has escalated the cost of construction. has escalated the cost of construction um to a very significant degree. I think the last estimate went from about five million dollars to nine million.
Something that just came to my mind, which is somewhat relevant, you know, when we approved the Wegman site, there had also been the, the docs or urgent care that ended up moving down the street. So there, I guess, if we were to, the city were to move to purchase the land, that there could be something done around relocation. But, you know, I definitely get your point, Tammy, about displacing a business.
And this is strictly a pump station, right?
The, the sewage pump station for that whole area on Connecticut Avenue and north of Connecticut Avenue goes through that pump station. It lifts it up and pumps the sewage to the east along Connecticut Avenue about twenty-five hundred feet, where it can flow by gravity to the wastewater treatment plant.
Because I, I know that one of the pump stations um that the city or that you have, uh, Ralph, is an elevated structure. I think there might be two of them. That wasn't possible in this location?
Yeah, we actually went for, uh, to the ZBA for variance. Um, we had to move everything up. Um, the electrical components to get it above a three feet above the hundred-year floodplain. However, uh, so the variance didn't, uh, we couldn't have a second story on the building. However, because we're still in the horizontal component of the hundred-year floodplain, FEMA will give the city zero dollars. So there's zero chance of getting funding. If we're able to both horizontally and vertically relocate outside of the hundred-year flood zone, there's potential to receive even more funding from FEMA.
Okay.
It really is the funding that's, that's, that's driving this, Tammy. Uh, the issue is, 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 is become, is, is even constructible on Eversource's property. And the difficulty downstream to doing, even doing any repairs, uh, we've, we've, it, it's, it's literally been seven years of attempting to negotiate with uh Eversource regarding how, how to do this to find out in the eleventh hour that there were going to be um numerous height uh restrictions um for the um construction equipment. That, that, again, staff has evaluated. I have heard repeatedly from them that it makes the project extreme, either extremely cumbersome to, to construct and it is significantly more expensive or, or just flatly unconstructable at all.
Okay, but I feel like I, when we came in, P and Z has come into this very late in the game. Sorry to ask questions that, you know, perhaps could have been answered before. I mean, we really didn't have any information on this to um study.
You're absolutely correct. This was um not sequenced the way that um I would have preferred. Um, you know, it, it was uh an item that uh we were asked to act on very quickly and advance very quickly, uh, given the sensitive, sensitivity of the infrastructure being a pump station, and if it were to go down, uh, it would be a major um health issue. Um, and, and, and um.
And funding is getting cut every day.
And, and it's also costing the city a, 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 a very large, a very significant amount of money to operate the temporary um pump station there. So every day, um, it's, it's extra dollars going out of the city's pocket that we don't have a permanent solution.
And in your opinion, would you say that because the Chick-fil-A property is ninety-nine percent hardtop that the flooding is probably worse than it was before that establishment was there?
I, I have no opinion on, on that issue. I, I wouldn't be qualified to to answer uh it, but you know, any additional impermeable surface is going to have some effect on, on drainage.
Yeah, and the Eversource property has a lot of blacktop on it too. Anyway, all right, thank you.
The, the, the good thing there is that there's potentially reduced, if we acquire the property, there's potential to reduce the um asphalt surface top, depending on how the design goes.
Could be part structure.
It might be a day late and a dollar short. Anyway.
How we have, uh, Chapin and Steve Cluppin also has his hand raised.
I have hopefully a quick question, which is um to understand a little bit of how much space uh a pump station is expected to consume on this site and, you know, as a follow-up. If there is room for a, a structure or a building to be rebuilt in its place, either for city use or for leased by the city?
Um, so the, the footprint of, of the pump station comparison to the overall lot is fairly small. Um, I would estimate uh it would cover, it could cover as, as little as twenty percent of that uh lot size. Um, Ralph can speak. Uh, correct me if I'm wrong. Um.
Probably less. It's like a thirty by thirty footprint with a structure and then uh gravity main and the force main leaving the station to a manhole and then going out to Connecticut Avenue.
Do you anticipate that a structure could be uh like at the front of the property? And that the uh pump station be located at the rear or something in that regards to accommodate uh more use on this site?
Uh, I, 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 I want to avoid getting into the topic of alternate uses of the property. The, the acquisition was approved specifically for purposes of building a, a pump station and um for, you know, for legal reasons, that, that is the um, that is the sole basis to exercise that authority.
All right. Just for reference, the pump station wet well, which where all the wastewater comes into before it gets pumped, it's gonna be about thirty feet below ground. So it's a, you know, sizable uh deep hole um in order to construct the wet well at the, for the pump station.
Thank you.
Steve, do you still have a comment or a question?
Chapin stole my thunder on both questions, so, but I will say we'll, we'll pester Ralph later on after the meeting about future plans.
Okay.
Sorry, Steve.
So if we approve this, then um it will go to the common council or who's gonna fund this project?
The project is um, has been approved by um the common council and the WPCA uh separately. Um, and the project has been um approved additionally. Uh, I'm sorry, the acquisition has been approved by both the WPCA and the, the common council. In addition, the WPCA has approved the funding of, of the um, of, of the acquisition. So um the city generally uh holds title to the property, real property um that the WPCA uses for purposes of um its sanitary infrastructure. And that would be the case here, but it would be funded by the WPCA.
But we fund the WPCA, so it's the same thing.
And how does?
Comes from collection of fees versus collection of taxes.
And was this included in the twenty-five year plan?
Re- replacement of the, of the pump station, yes. The emergency replacement, no, we did not anticipate the emergency.
Exactly. All right. Thank you.
I mean, I, I, I would just like to point out that, uh, you know, every effort was uh made over the past seven years to avoid acquiring a, a parcel. Um, in, in attempting to um, to construct a, a new pump station on, on the Eversource property. Um, it, 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 it just, the, the amount of time that has passed, the failure of the pump station a year ago, uh, the difficulty of construction and the fact that um, you know, it, it.
Yeah, I think we understand the, yeah, but, yeah.
Uh, I'll move that we um uh approve um this referral and move it to the common council.
And I'll second.
Hey, wonderful. Uh, let's do a roll call vote. Chapin, you have, do you still have a question? Or concern?
My hand? Nope, uh, I don't have it raised. Yeah, okay.
All right, uh, Ms. Lankowski?
Yes.
Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
Ms. Langallis?
No.
Mr. Williams?
I believe it meets our P O C D and our goals as a city, so yes.
Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan Byron?
Yes.
And Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Right, that is approved.
Okay, wonderful.
And hopefully things will get worked out with the, the business or businesses that are currently on site, and we can place them.
Right. We'll move on to the next matter. That's uh ten dash twenty S P Zion Properties LLC, five twenty-one through five twenty-eight Main Avenue. Request for bond release for approved per dealership. Report a recommendation.
Sure. Yeah, I'll go over this one quick, Ms. Wells. Uh, this is for the Garrett Hard Dealership on Main Avenue. Um, they have since received their COZC. They're asking for a release of their erosion and control bond.
Okay, is there?
I'll move.
Motion? Yes, there is.
I'll move. Tammy seconds, I guess.
I'll second.
Uh, we should, I guess we should do a roll call. Those?
Sure. Uh, Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan Byron?
Yes.
Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
Ms. Langallis?
Yes.
Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
Ms. Lankowski?
Yes.
And Ms. Wells? All right, that's unanimous.
Okay, so we'll move on to the next matter. This is twenty twenty-four dash ten S P flash cam Web Construction LLC, thirty-four Meadow Street, District Two, Block Ninety-One, Lot One O Five. It's an extension of time. Request for approval contractor's storage yard and rock crushing and uh processing unit. Use, excuse me, I'm having trouble seeing this, this agenda, so. Excuse me. Um, who is here representing Web Construction?
I am Madam Chair.
Wonderful. Please proceed.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. For the record, I'm Liz Suchi at, of Carmody Torrent Sandec in Tennessee. You may recall this application from last year. Uh, Web Construction appeared before you and received May twenty twenty-four for a contractor's yard, the new eighteen thousand square foot, eighteen thousand eight hundred square foot building with indoor material processing on the old LeBlanc property at the toward the rear of Meadow Street. Um, we're seeking an extension of time for a variety of reasons, but I want to give you an update on where we are to date. The Mylar map was recorded in August of twenty twenty-five. Certificate of Special Permit was recorded in September of twenty twenty-five. Um, my client has been uh working with its consultants to get construction drawings going that are necessary for a zoning permit and a building permit. The agreement with the LeBlanc family took longer than was expected. It took longer than expected for the LeBlanc family to shut down its business and remove possessions from the building that was necessary in order to undertake additional testing and analysis of building in the site. Um, additional testing was required by the building department in connection with the demolition permit of the three buildings to be demolished. All of those tests came back negative, and so now we're in the process of utilities necessary for the demolition of the structures, and all utilities have been shut off with the exception of water. We need to get through uh time so that there's no threat of frost with um, with shutting down the water utilities. Um, we expect to commence demolition shortly, I would say, with probably within the next six weeks. And thereafter, file, I would file our documents for zoning permit and building permit. Um, the application is, excuse me, the approval is valid through May, but we wanted to come to you early so that we weren't appearing before you at the eleventh hour, seeking an approval for an extension. I'm confident that Web Construction will move forward with this project as soon as it can. And I would just ask for an extension of time. If the commission deems it appropriate to only grant six months, that would be fine. Uh, we would hope that we not have to be before you, the expiration of that six months. But um whatever your pleasure is, we would be certainly willing to abide by that. Um, on the line tonight is James Brenya of Web Construction. If you have any further comments or questions.
Hey, are there any questions? If there are no questions, do I hear your motion?
Uh, I'll make a motion for a, a, a one-year extension. Uh, I don't, I don't want these folks back again. Uh, let them, let them get on with their project.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion. Oh, sorry, Dan.
Uh, Chapin, second to motion, and we'll do another roll call vote.
Sure. Uh, Ms. Lankowski?
Yes.
Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
Ms. Langallis?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan Byron?
Yes.
And Mr. Williams?
Yes.
And Ms. Wells?
Yes.
That is approved.
Thank you.
Okay, now the next matter is twenty twenty-four dash oh eight S P Cam Harbor Ventures LLC and Plumbing Works LLC, eighteen Harbor Avenue, District One, Block Twenty-Five, Lot Seven. And this is an extension of time to request, is requested to construct a new building and use entire property as an earth processing and contract material storage.
Unfortunately, you have me one more time, and I promise to be brief. Similar to the Web Con- Construction request, this again is a request for an extension of time. I'm Liz Suchi of Carmody Torrent Sandec in Tennessee. I represent Harbor Ventures, Harbor Ventures. Uh, present tonight on the line, if you have any questions, is Rob Fahey. He is the owner of Plumbing Works, which is the operator and owner of property. And in March of twenty twenty-four, this commission granted approval for a new structure and site improvements at eighteen Harbor for Contractor Storage Yard for Plumbing Works, and that business will stay and expand. Uh, the certificate of special permit and the Mylar of the site plan were both recorded in August of last year. Uh, the delay in securing permits has been caused by, first, some internal corporate changes that were necessary for Plumbing Works and Harbor Ventures. Those have been resolved. Um, my client's been working on financing for the project. That is underway. And lastly, um, he is seeking estimates from contractors to commence work on the project. So these things have delayed us in seeking the appropriate permits from the zoning department and also the building department. My client fully intends to move forward with this project, and hopefully, again, you would be willing to grant him a one-year extension of time. But if you think six months is, is preferable, we certainly can abide by that. Move forward with the project, get the permits issued.
Hey, are there any uh questions or comments? For Tony Suchi? If not, do I hear a motion? Uh, Tammy?
I'll make the motion.
Hey, good. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconds? Uh, let's do another roll call vote, please.
Ms. Jordan Byron?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Langallis?
Yes.
Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
Ms. Lankowski?
Yes.
And Ms. Wells?
Yes.
All right, that is also approved.
Thank you very much for your time tonight. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Okay, now we move on to the section for public hearings. Our public hearing is twenty twenty-five dash oh six R, City of Norwalk, Zoning Regulation Text Amendment to Article Four, Six, and Eight relating to setbacks within the S D dash L I S D dash H I and S D dash M C zones. Updating terminology to reference the Norwalk Complete Streets Ordinance and Design Guide, revisiting where certain building types are permitted, updating language to reference stormwater and drainage best practices for the MS Four program, revisions to parking space dimensions, incentives to certain workforce housing criteria, and clarifications to site plan review and special permit requirements. This is a public hearing, and afterwards there will be a report of recommendation. Um, Steve or Diana, are you going to present for this?
Certainly. Well, you can all see that. Um, so it'll do, I'll quickly go through. We had presented um these preliminary changes to you a while back. Um, so you may not remember everything that was included, and we made a few adjustments to it along the way. Um, so. Um, so uh I'll quickly just go through what we are proposing to amend. Most of this is based on. Uh, you'll remember at the end of last year, uh, when we were doing some more comprehensive updates to the regs. Both T M P and W P C A provided a memorandum on some changes that they would like to see. At that time, it was a little bit too late for us to make those amendments to the changes that were already underway. So we're kind of getting to those now. Um, so the first change here is uh specific to the C D two zone. This is a result of um. More so staff initiated and kind of what we're seeing with duplexes coming in. Um, so this would apply strictly to duplexes in the C D two zone and it's. We had put in this architectural requirement where the front door from the. Of the duplex had to be um essentially. How it was written was the garage had to be set back by six feet from the front door. Um, but staff, as we started seeing applications come in, I don't think we mind whether it's. The garage be set back six feet or the front doors be set back six feet. So we're kind of changing it to allow both to occur. Um, and and stating that they they just have to be offset from one another by six feet. So just a a minor tweak to kind of like an architectural feature to a duplex. Um, the second change, this is to the light industrial and heavy industrial zones. It's to modify some of the setbacks and also add in setbacks that don't exist today. Um, so the first would be to modify the principal front setback. Instead of measuring from the center line of the street, we would just measure ten feet from the. Front property line. It's roughly the same in most cases, so it's not really a measurable dis- difference. But it'll provide a little bit more clarity to both applicants and staff of where we're measuring from for a setback. And in line with that, we also need to add in a setback for secondary frontage, which applies to corner lots. You have two frontages, so we would add in a setback where you'd measure from there. And with that, we need to have setbacks for accessory buildings, which currently don't exist. So um we put together uh setbacks that would apply to accessory structures for light industrial and heavy industrial zone properties.
Brian, could I interrupt, please?
Sure.
Um, thank you. Can you go back to the um ten-foot minimum setback? So the front setback, the principal frontage. Ten-foot minimum. To me, thirty-five foot minimum from the center line of the street might be less confusing because ten feet minimum from. What?
So that's measured from the front property line. So.
How, how is, a lot of people think, oh, the city owns eight feet of my. Property, or they don't think the city does, but the city does. There's always a lot of vagueness around that, so. Could you clarify that a little bit more?
Yeah, so what happens most of the time is if you're coming in to build a new structure, you're providing a survey no matter what. So what they're going to do is provide a survey measuring ten feet back from that front property line, and that's where they can start building structures. Currently with a thirty-five foot center line setback, what they have to do is still provide a survey, but they also have to. Have their surveyor do additional work of clarifying what the center line of the road is and verifying that with D P W and putting that on a map. And so what that happens is it could result in like varying. Front setbacks for properties where roads widen and narrow. Um, so this would be just more of a generic, um, everybody kind of knows where they're measuring from uh uh application.
Okay, and if somebody wanted to put an addition on the front of their house, you're still going to use the same, they'll still have to get the survey. And and determine it the same way.
Correct.
This is consistent with what we do in the residential zones now. And it's just the most common way to do this.
Okay, thank you.
Um, similar to that, we're kind of proposing the same thing for the Marine Commercial Zone. Um, so. There's existing a five-foot minimum front setback. Um, so again, it didn't take into account corner lots, so we wanted to differentiate between the two so that they would. They don't align in this case. Uh, and then also add in uh accessory structure setbacks. So what we we've done with the accessory structure setback, which is similar to all the other zones, is essentially it's the front setback plus twenty feet. So um we kind of mirrored that language. Four is just a reference. This is from T M P um to reference the Complete Streets Design Guide. Um, instead of the Norwalk uh or the D P W roadway standards, you'll see this change a lot. Anywhere we reference the roadway standards. It's um going to be replaced by the Complete Streets Design Guide. Um, so this is visibility for corner lots. Um, essentially saying when, how tall things can be uh for. To um not block sight lines. Um, five, this one looks long, but it's um it's kind of in keeping with the the Complete Streets Design Guide changes. Um, so this is for limitations for certain uses. So this first one is large multifamily buildings. Uh, the first change is we're deleting the workforce housing line. Um, that's just because that it's kind of duplicative. It already applies. Um, there's no opt-out of the workforce housing standard, so it kind of doesn't need to be said. So just kind of cleaning that up. The red text here is, one, it's updating the street types based on the Complete Streets Design Guide. And it's also proposing to allow for large multifamily buildings on these streets, provided that. Um, there's also a mixed-use component to it. Um, it's a bit confusing. Right now, how it's applied is you have to do a mixed-use building on these streets, no F N's or buts. So you can't do a a mixed-use building at the front of the property and then a multifamily at the back. And you can't do them next to each other. It has to be a mixed-use building. So this would allow for somebody to potentially do a mixed-use building for fifty percent of the frontage. And then a a large multifamily right next to it, or they could do mixed use at the front of the property and then a large multifamily in the back. And we we put in sort of like the requirement that that large multifamily would have to have a certain frontage type that we'd like to see, sort of like the townhouse front. Which was similar to like the the redevelopment of the Y M C A site and kind of what they're proposing to do there. So that was large multifamilies in the C D three C. We're proposing to continue that language for the C D four. Um, changed the medical office in the C D three to reference the Complete Streets Design Guide. Offices within the C D three to reference the Complete Streets Design Guide. Restaurants. And then um retail sales is sort of like that corner store concept that we did when we adopted the new regs. Um, again, to just reference the Complete Streets Design Guide and not the D P W roadway standards anymore. Um, small multifamily buildings, similar text as the large multifamily buildings. Um, the one difference between small multifamily buildings here is that you would not have to do a mixed-use component. Um, if the lot is less than or equal to five thousand square feet, those are relatively small lots. Um, so it might not make sense for them to to do a mixed-use building, or they might not be able to park it. Um, so they would be able to just come in and do a uh up to six-unit building, provided they have the lot size. And and just do a multifamily. And a change to waterfront clubs, um, per request that came in is that. Um, they do get, they do provide seasonal employee housing for folks who come over from different countries and work during the summer. At the the waterfront clubs, so we're proposing to allow that as an accessory use um to waterfront clubs. Uh, this is a T M P request um for the shared parking factor for kind of like how to, how you can potentially. Reduce um parking when you have multiple users on a property. Um, T M P kind of uh requested some clarification there. Um, and then they had requested that we remove the um allowance for compact parking spaces. This is because in the zones, we allow for eight-foot wide parking spaces, as small as eight-foot wide parking spaces. And per T M P's recommendation, that's kind of the narrowest they would want parking spaces to be. Um, currently, the regs allow them to go down to seven and a half feet wide um for for compact spaces. So their recommendation was an eight-foot wide spot. Would be the the minimum that they would want to see. So this would be, just in continuing with that, would be deleting the compact spa- uh parking space table. Uh, T M P change, again, just to reference the design guide. Um, this is for offsetting uh driveways when they're across the street from one another. And then minimum backup space, again, referencing the Complete Streets Design Guide. Uh, W P C A change, uh, so this is when you're disturbing land or building a new development. Um, that it would apply with uh the applicable M S four requirements that are listed here. And instead of. Uh, an optional or discretionary requirement for a drainage maintenance plan, um, it is a a mandate under this text. Um, additional W P C A requirements. So again, um, this is just adding as amended. So that as the drainage manual of the city is updated, that that's reflected here. Uh, referencing best practices for E N S control plans. And then giving you all, as the Planning and Zoning Commission, more authority to uh to require additional uh. Water quality improvements as necessary. And then this would be a a requirement that um the the drainage installation is um as a final inspection. Uh, workforce housing change. Uh, so this is for developments. That are opting to provide their ten percent workforce housing at sixty percent S M I. That they would be given the ability to reduce their parking down to one space per unit. So they have option A, which is ten percent of the units at eighty percent S M I, plus the workforce housing fee. Or B, um, ten percent of the units at sixty percent S M I. No fee and they can reduce uh the parking down to one space per unit. Um, this was text.
I'm, I'm, I I apologize, Brian. Let me go back to that. Um, the reduction in parking. Uh, can they, uh, are you suggesting go down to uh one parking spot? For each of uh the affordable units or for the?
For the entire development.
That's the, that's the way the regulation was previously crafted. Um, the the kind of concept behind that is that, as Brian indicated, there are two options. Um, one option is you do the eighty percent S M I plus you pay the fee. Um, a lot of developers are opting for that because over time they get more per rent with the eighty percent versus sixty. We're trying to induce people to do more at sixty percent because that helps with a little deeper level of affordability. Okay, thank you.
Uh, another workforce housing, this is to encourage more two-bedroom uh workforce units. So it would be to count them as one and a half units towards the total. Um, to hopefully incentivize folks to provide more of these, the two-bedroom affordable units.
And that was a need identified in the Affordable Housing Plan. I I noticed uh that some of the recommendations in the Affordable Housing Plan uh seem to be at odds. With what uh our um, the regional planning body uh is suggesting. Um, uh, I I find it sort of ironic that the most of the towns that are represented. By that body don't adhere uh to uh any of these requirements. That is why we did our own plan.
Uh, this one is in regards to site plan review applications. It's kind of confusing out of context with the reg. Um, so the existing regulation says here, for site plan review, here's a bunch of things that are exempt from. Site plan review applications. Um, what I am trying to make clear here is that anything within the use table. That says that it's permitted and nowhere else does it require a site plan review or special permit, that that means it's exempt from site plan review. It's just an over-the-counter administrative approval. It's kind of a long way just to say that. It says if the use is permitted. And doesn't reflect a site plan or special permit requirement, then it's permitted as of right over the counter. Which is how we function now. I just wanted to have some clarifying language. Um, this is uh T M P changes that they wanted. Uh, this is uh also for site site plans. Um, they wanted kind of additional information provided on site plans, so um. Driveway site triangles and intersection corner site triangles for corner lots. And then uh for the site and circulation plans, they wanted pavement markings and traffic control signage. So just additional detail to help T M P as they review applications as they come in. Um, this change is also specific to site plans, so um you all know that site plan reviews are um generally. Um, if they comply with the regulations as written, then you have to approve them. Um, so as it's written now, there's a bit of ambiguity and discretion within uh this reg, which is not the intent. And it kind of opens up um us to uh being appealed on decisions if we make discretionary uh. Approvals for site plan reviews. So this kind of deletes the discretion. And references the specific sections um within the regs where we could say yes or no an application. Complies with or doesn't comply with uh these various sections. Another T M P request for, um, this is both for site plan and special permit applications. Um, just clarifying when a traffic report is required. We already require them, as you can see here, for anything that. Will generate over five hundred vehicle trips per day. T M P wanted additional language that. Says, or over fifty vehicle trips in any peak hour. It's roughly consistent with the existing language. So staff doesn't have any concerns with that. And then also referencing um that site plans would get referred out to all applicable reviewing. Um, bodies, not just uh Public Works or T M P. And T M P had wanted to delete vehicle miles traveled. Right now, it's not really anything that um they use or any. Uh, traffic reports kind of consider. So they didn't want to kind of have confusing language or metrics added into traffic reports, so we're proposing to delete that for now. And again, this is just the same exact text, just for special permits instead of site plan reviews. And then lastly, I'll just pull up. Uh, find it. So we did refer this out to all the applicable reviewing agencies. Uh, so West Cog. D P um. Harbor and the neighboring towns. Just wanted to make sure, um, the only one that's. We really need to read into the record is the um D P one. Um, West Cog found it consistent with. Uh, their plan. Didn't hear anything back from Harbor or the other towns. So I'll just pick up. This was included in your packet. Um, the letter from D P. And um. So this can all be summarized essentially to say that they found it consistent with the Connecticut Coastal Management Act. Hey, actually, we're in favor of the changes, so that's, that's helpful. And that's it for my presentation.
Are there any questions or discussion? Before we move on to the public hearing? Hearing done, we will move on to the public hearing. We should go over the rules quickly for public hearings. Uh, you raise your hand. And you will be moved in to give your testimony. Um, you get to speak once, so try to say everything that you feel is important to say in that one. Opportunity to speak. We don't give you a time limit, but we appreciate. opportunity to speak. We don't give you a time limit, but we appreciate it if you are cognizant of the time that is being taken. Not to repeat what other people have said unless you feel it's important for you to do so. Brian, are you ready to see if there are people?
Sure. Yep. If anyone from the public would like to speak, you use the raise your hand tool. You just click that once at the bottom of your screen. For the four folks who are still on.
Yes.
Not seeing any takers, Ms. Wells.
Okay. Okay, then we will close the public hearing. If there's nobody here to to speak. So the public hearing is closed. And is there any further discussion?
A question from the staff. I mean, I assume I know the answer, but I want to ask it anyway. And that is, I assume that you are comfortable with all of these changes.
Yeah, overall, they're mostly minor. Nothing that's really going to impact, provides more clarity for you, you, us, and applicants.
Yeah, another thing I'd add is that we're, we're actually have a couple other workforce housing tweaks we're working on based off the Affordable Housing Plan and a couple flood ones, but I think we're getting pretty close to getting the bugs worked out of everything, so we're pretty happy about that. And, you know, it'll get evaluated continually, but I think for the most part, the heavy lift piece of it's done.
Good.
Thank you.
Oh, there was a, oh, Tammy has her hand up.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Galen. Steve, I think it was Attorney Suchi that sent a comment to the commission regarding the compact parking spaces. And the only place that I could really think of that has them in Norwalk is the Sono Collection. And I'm wondering, did you take that into consideration when you were talking about that? Is it something that that, you know, should be fleshed out a little bit more?
And Brian can expand on it a little more, I think, but I, I think the, the position for the reduction is just based the fact that our required maximum width is not very wide as it is, so it almost function as a compact space. Do you really, it'd be almost infeasible to go much lower? That's, is that a good summary, Brian, or?
Yeah, and those folks too, I mean, they, their parking exists as is, so this would only affect new applications coming in. So every, if you had compact spaces before that were approved by us and were less than eight feet wide, then those would be just vested as, as existing parking.
And, and just in thinking about affordable units, affordable housing, and how all the developers say how costly parking is, parking spaces. Is it any less expensive to make the compact spaces, only because maybe you can squeeze in one more space, something like that?
I would think it's pretty de minimis in the cost perspective.
Yeah, we did as part of the original rewrite, we reduced parking requirements for a lot of the commercial uses pretty substantially. So there's definitely savings there that, you know, if they're, if they're building a mixed-use, building a commercial component, the parking for that definitely was reduced by a lot.
Okay, thank you.
Frankly, my experience with compact spaces is people don't respect them. I often see very large SUVs squeezed into compact spaces. And of course, it's not, it's not really monitored in any way. Certainly at the Sono Collection, it's not. So I, I'm not a particular favor of contact, compact spaces in any case.
I have a compact car, so I always liked the idea of compact spaces because hopefully nobody else has parked there.
And I'd like to think my car is compact, but it isn't, and the, and the spaces always remind me.
Using compact spaces. I'm not sure they do much good. Any other comments?
With everything enforcement, like a lot of things enforcement is the major part of it.
Yeah, something like that's imprac, impossible for any agency to really, it would have to be the who's ever managing the parking lot, but that's, it's, you know, the manpower, it's just a waste of money.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing done, is there a motion to approve?
I'd move to approve the resolution.
Okay.
Second.
There is seconds?
Pull up the resolution.
Yeah, let me do that.
Yeah, there's just no way I can see that.
Try to make it as big as I can.
I had a procedure on my eye yesterday, and so I like not seeing anything, so you can't go by me.
Looks good to me.
Okay, should we move on to a to a vote? A roll call vote? Does someone want to do the roll call?
Sure. Ms. Lankowski?
Yes.
Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Langallis?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan Byron?
Yes.
And Ms. Wells?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next item is a discussion, the capital budget ordinance discussion. I think Steve was going to lead that discussion.
Yeah, and it can be very brief because in the time between, I asked Brian to put it on the agenda, and tonight I had a conversation with Jared Schmidt, who's the CFO for the city. He's been working with the Charter Revision Committee on some changes to the, you know, the budgeting process. And he brought up the role of the commission in that, and I said, oh, we were actually talking about it at the same time. I sent him the memo that I had forwarded to you, and he thought, you know, most of the changes in there were in line with the kind of thing he was thinking about. And the one that I thought was really helpful, that the commission thought was, you know, good on their end as well, would be that, you know, at some point, I don't know when it would occur in the calendar, but there would be a singular presentation of the capital budget to all the appropriate agencies. That way, I mean, if you think about it, having for departments to go to three or four different agencies is kind of a lot of work for them when they can just do it one time. And he also felt the timing would be different in that not every item would get to your review or even some of the other agency reviews. So there's, you know, everybody puts in their big list of wishes and wants, and those get slashed just based on the fiscal constraints that he outlines. So at that point, when those actual proposals are, have been vetted, then it will come back to the different bodies for review. So I, I think that streamlines the process quite a bit, less work. And then I think my thinking, bigger term, is I know, you know, you guys don't have any real say in whether something is included or excluded, but I do think it's valuable that you see where the city's money going, money, monies are going in terms of how you're focusing on your long-term planning, because you want to keep those things in mind as you're thinking about how you're changing and altering land use and different things throughout the city. So I, I do think there is value in it, but also being cognizant of not wasting your time or the other folks' time that have to put these items together. So I think sort of like stay tuned at this point, and we'll see how conversation shakes out with Jared.
Sounds good. Thanks.
Yep, thank you. Should we move on to the acceptance of minutes? Minutes of March 5th, 2025? Is there a motion to accept?
I wasn't present.
Okay.
I'll move to accept.
I'll second.
Chafin moves, Tammy seconds. Is there any discussion? If not, are we all in favor of accepting the minutes as drafted? Raise your hand.
I abstain.
Okay. Anybody against accepting the minutes as drafted?
I abstain.
She was going to get to us.
Okay, okay.
JJ and Darius abstain, thank you.
Okay. Okay, good. All right. So let's see. Comments of the directors?
Just a couple of quick things. I had sent around a training opportunity. If anybody has any interest in site plan review, which actually is just looking at the plans, and if you're not comfortable with that, there's a training opportunity available. Happy to facilitate that if anybody has an interest in that. Second item is related to a recently received application for Gray Barnes. You recall, they were in front of you guys, maybe two months ago, about amending their special permit. And they want to do events at their barn, which is across the street from the inn, so they finally submitted their application. The applicant has requested that we hold a site visit, which would be a meeting of the commission. So I'll be going to work with corp counsel and the applicant on a date and a time. So the public is allowed to attend this meeting. It's not a public hearing, so the discourse and conversation is going to be restricted into who you can talk to or who can talk to you. But we thought it would be a good idea for you guys to see the actual space, get a better lay of the land in terms of where the neighbors are, because I'm sure you're going to hear from them during the public hearing process. So we'll work on a date and time. Probably going to think, we were at least thinking, maybe, you know, the daylight savings is increasing every day by a couple minutes, maybe like 5:30 to 6:30 one evening, probably at a special meeting sometime, probably next month is just what we're thinking now.
And Darius, you had your hand up?
My question was whether or not we were thinking of it being a special meeting, but.
Yeah. Probably, I think, will be easier, because otherwise you'd have to somehow adjourn and get back.
Yep.
Yeah. Last item is not your next meeting, but I think it's April 16th is your second April meeting. That one will be in person in the council chambers. We had an applicant request. They are not comfortable with Zoom at all. And we were also talking at one point with, talking with the chair about, you know, maybe quarterly having you guys just meet once in person anyway, just to be a good idea to say hello and have an in-person meeting. So I think plan on that for your April 16th meeting at City Hall.
Yeah, and there's always the opportunity to zoom in if you can to attend in person for some reason. Okay.
Yep, we'll, we'll make sure both options are.
Okay.
And Steve, do we have a date for training by corporation counsel?
No, Mario was asking, and I actually, because everybody just, a lot of people just did training, and I was like, why are we just rushing right back into it again? So I thought I was going to wait unless you guys tell me rather do something sooner rather than later. But they do have, you know, the, the issue was cleared up with what Mario's, Marco Paulus' firm could do, so they do have the program laid out, so that's no longer in question. It's just a time, you know, when you guys feel you, you want to do that.
Okay, does anybody have any feeling on that?
Well, what is Mario's program?
I had talked to him. They, they have a standard program they do because they represent many municipalities. And I had a couple of things I really wanted to stress would be like ex parte communication, FOIA, all those kinds, I thought were pretty critical kind of things for you guys to just go over and reinforce.
My, my own feeling is those things are long overdue. And we ought to do it sooner. That's just my opinion. We ought to do it sooner rather than later. We've been putting it off and putting it off.
All right, I'll circle back with Mario on that. Oh, and I did think of one other thing, Mr. Schulman, that we did get an answer from the folks on Washington Street about their fountain, which they said was down for the winter. They said it will be back up and running next month, and the trees on Water Street should get replanted hopefully next month as well.
Well, I've noticed, I, I, I don't know how many trees are required on Water Street, but for many of the trees they've taken down, they've filled the holes with the blacktop. So I, I just asked when they do that, we do a count just to make sure we're getting the number of trees back that they are required.
Yeah, I have, sure, sorry. I have one of my staff coordinating with DPW, so we'll make sure they put them back.
Yeah, I was noticing that the other day driving by, Lou, and they did, they just filled over the holes. Not good.
No, not good.
Doesn't look like the rendering.
Right.
Any other comments of commissioners?
Um, I, I'll just briefly say that I ran into the CFO of NPS, Alunda Esmani, at the mayor's ball. And we had gotten the conversation about the advancement of the construction at the schools. I had complimented the pace of the construction at the South Norwalk Elementary School, and he invited us all for a site visit. And, you know, just if anyone wants to tour the site, I guess we can tell Steve and and he can get in touch with Alunda, and we can make it happen.
I would love.
They did convey to him that we spend copious amounts of time reviewing, researching, discussing applications just to see the update on, in the hour, so he was very receptive to that.
That would be interesting to see it.
Yeah, it would. Thank you.
I just have a couple of questions, if I may, Galen, or comments. In, in looking at those, the application for the extension on Meadow Street, it reminded me that when we were doing the industrial zone rewrite, how many of those businesses down there said, oh, you know, we're going to beautify, we're going to do this, and we're going to do that. There was, you would have thought millions of dollars were going to be spent on that stretch of road. To my eyes, nothing has changed, and it just looks, you know, as dirty and worse as it ever has. So I don't know if, Steve, since you're being quite the diplomat with the applicant on Larson Street, that maybe you guys can go over there and work with them, because they were, you know, they all said they were going to do landscaping, and nothing has happened. And then just a question, last week when we, or last meeting, when we approved that, I believe it was 12 Main Street where the applicant changed the upstairs of the building to residential. Is, is that property then reassessed? Does the value change? Because, you know, we're having that, the commercial real estates have gone down in value, residential have gone up in value. What happens in a situation like that?
So I wasn't at the last meeting, it's like, I.
Still a commercial site, the Connecticut Surgical Supply one you're talking about.
It's a good question. I know that the, I don't know how often the assessors update field cards. They are in our office pretty often going over like latest approvals. So I can follow up with them and see how they go about doing that once something like that happens.
Great, because I think in, you know, the state, there's a lot of conversation about changing commercial spaces and malls into residential space, and I just want to know how that's going to impact the grand list at the end of the day.
I also think if it's like four units or more, then it automatically classifies as commercial and no longer residential. I don't, someone correct me if I'm wrong, but.
Yeah, I'm not sure what the number of units is, but I think it's around, it's three or four, yeah.
Okay, thanks. That's all.
Okay, any, anyone else? Have a comment, a question? If there are none, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Chafin moves, second, Darius seconds. All those in favor, raise your hand. Wonderful. Wonderful. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you.